So we are a remote participation meeting, so just a reminder, we are doing all votes by roll call. First item on the agenda, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any from the public?
Shouldn't we read the statement?
We told Laura, I think, checked with Cindy. We don't necessarily need to do that because there's a change in, it has nothing to do with a a state of emergency anymore. It's a matter of law. Go ahead, read it. Tim, read it then.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, when I spoke with Cindy, she said that we should modify it to recognize the act, just to be on the safe side, but that she was much more concerned that we did a roll call for every vote. But this open meeting of the Mendon Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's updated guidance on holding meetings pursuant to the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures that was signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This Act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. For this meeting, the Men's Select Board is convening by video telephone conference, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting will feature public comment.
Thank you. Correspondence to the board. We have a Bay State Trail Riders request to hold their poker run on July 25th from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Inman Hill Conservation Area. I'll take a motion.
So moved. You want me to read it or?
No, I think we're good. Second. All right, first and second, and all in favor?
Raleigh, aye.
Kenny, oh, aye.
Real aye.
Thank you. Joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners. Mr. Rudden, how are you?
Good. Well, I do not see Alan Kent on the call. So that would leave, that would leave me as the sole commissioner on the call. As you know, I can't remember the town clerk's exact title for it, but no candidate ran for the open three-year seat on the Water Commission. In the write-ins, there was a tie, and I believe Ellen Agro called it a failure to act or something like that.
It's a failed election.
Thank you, Michael. And the remedy for that is a joint meeting of both our boards. And my understanding of the law is a majority of us present tonight can elect a member of the board who serves until next year's election and then runs for the unexpired term.
Okay. Great. So Kevin, would you think that maybe the best thing to do is have Mr. Roy introduce himself and, and talk a little bit about his background?
Yes, I, I would.
All right, Mr. Roy.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you for, thank you for having me here tonight. So my name is Vincent Roy. I've lived in Mendon for over four years. I think we're going on five years now. I lived on Offa North Road. And I grew up in the area, but more, more to my professional background. I work in the water industry. I am currently the Executive Director for the Sudbury Water District. I've been working in the industry since a young man, when I got out of the Navy, 22 years old. So I've got 36-plus years in the industry. I started out, you know, as a basic operator and put myself through school and made myself available for all types of boards. Currently, I serve on the Education Committee for New England Water Works. I also serve on the Legislative Committee for Mass Water Works. Chair, co-chair of the Education Committee, which I just left down not too long ago. So, but I bring up a lot of experience. And so I seen that there was an opening here. I wish I had known ahead of time because I would have pulled papers. I noticed when I voted two weeks back that there was a vacancy, and so I decided to write myself in. And then I contacted my friends and neighbors that live in town here and seen if they could vote for me. So that's how I ended up here tonight. So I, with my experience and background, I, I think I could bring a lot of, a lot of good to the board. You've got a, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of infrastructure, non-infrastructure. You've got a lot of experience on the board now. The two members that have been here, I know have been there probably 20-plus years. Well versed as to what, what the regulatory requirements are and really up to speed with what they recommend. And that's obviously where I, you know, I would need to be brought up to speed if I, if I was to be selected tonight. So that's pretty much it. I just like the opportunity to, to, you know, serve on a board like this in town, be able to, you know, pay it forward, so to speak. So that's pretty much it.
Great. Kevin, have you had the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Roy, or do you want to start that off?
Mr. Roy attended the last meeting of the Water Commission.
Okay.
Alan Kent and I and Dan Byer spent a good deal of time talking. I'd just like to ask Selectman Morally a quick question. Mike, is, is Chris no longer interested?
No, he's, when he found out who, who Mr. Roy was and what his background was, you know, he, he stepped up because, because he was asked to, but, but clearly, you know, he, he has not written a letter or showed any further interest beyond,
Okay.
you know, being tied for a right.
Well, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. I believe Mr. Roy is the only person who's expressed, expressed interest in, I think his background is quite honestly superb, and we would be a big help to the current members. You know, either Mr. Kent or I are getting any younger these days. And I don't mean that as a negative, but it's nice to see someone younger than us with experience run for office. So, you know, on behalf of the Water Board, I'd, I'd like to nominate him for the vacancy. And I realize it's only the four of us who could vote tonight, but I'll make the motion to, to nominate him for the vacancy.
Great. Second. Okay. I just want to point out that, you know, I reviewed Mr. Roy's resume and experience, and I think it's clear that, that he has the experience to bring to the table and will be very helpful to our community. So thank you for stepping up. Do any select board members have any comments before we vote? Now, just thank you for stepping up and look forward to working with you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Great. Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Sorry.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Thank you, Mr. Roy. I believe your next step is to be sworn in with, with Ellen Agro at the Town Clerk's Office.
I'm assuming that's going to be in person. I can go to the Town Hall tomorrow. I was probably not with us at the meeting now, but yes, I will make arrangements with Ellen.
Very good.
Okay, Boyd Davis, thank you so much. Greatly appreciated, and I really look forward to working on the water. I'm passionate about what I do here, so yeah.
The next commission meeting is Thursday, July 1st.
July 1st. I'm going to write it down right now.
Okay, we've been meeting the first Thursday of the month. We have been virtual. I hope we can be in person this time.
I hope so, too. I'm sick of these virtual days myself, so.
I'll leave that to the eminently qualified Mr. Byer to tell us if we're in person or not.
Right, I get you. Okay.
And look forward to serving with you.
I look forward to working with you, serving with you guys. Okay, on my own, my own side, I sign off.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Kevin, thank you, and I'll see you on the first.
Okay.
You're good.
Thank you. Okay. Discuss Federal Rescue Plan Act funding.
Yeah, we, the, the Commissioner just wanted to bring to your attention. While I don't know if the town has its funding yet and even knows what it is. My understanding is the funding is limited to certain areas for this new iteration of, I don't want to call it CARES Act 2, but you know, the latest relief plan from DC. But among the things it can fund, I noticed, or water and sewer infrastructure. And just wanted to bring to your attention, we have some things that the Water Commission's grappling with paying for. And we also have some longer-term things I think the town is interested in. The last numbers I heard came from the Mass Municipal Association. Said the town can get as much as 1.8 million. I have no idea if that's true. But it was 613,093 directly to the town, and then another 1.2 million as a share had we had a county. But I just wanted to discuss with you guys that is, when the funding's available, we have certain projects we're trying to pay for, among them, the replacement of two water mains, excuse me, two water meters. The DEP, for a long time, has wanted us to build a second interconnect with Hope Dale at Plains Road. We've got permission but no money to do an emergency interconnect with Bellingham, which would be a great prelude to getting water from them. We keep chipping away at a relationship with them. You have the well for the Town Hall that you're working on that would qualify. And most importantly, we could seriously take a look at bringing water and/or sewer to parts of the center of town. You know, at least look at an updated study and see what it would take to do that. And so we just wanted to, oh, and there's going to be a new well dug for the affordable housing project next to the senior center. All those qualify for, for funding.
Right.
Underwater and sewer. It's not COVID remediation, but it's, it's more taking care of the infrastructure to expand it, make sure you have a good infrastructure should another pandemic occur. But we just wanted to put in your head the, the fact that there were projects out there. Because at first glance, the three main things it funds are expanding broadband, well, we have Comcast and Verizon. So it's not like it's a Western Mass town where they have none and they go build it. And people automatically think, oh, we don't have water or sewer. And I believe the other thing it paid for was some public safety improvements, which you can always use. But we do have water needs in town. COVID did interrupt a sort of cross-board committee we had one or two meetings of back in early 2020 to look at it, at expanding water and sewer. I know Mike Morally helped out greatly. His son Tom on the Economic Development Committee came, the fire chief came. You know, we're going to resurrect those, those meetings now that COVID's over. But the idea that some funding is there, we just wanted to put your heads, there are some needs for it in the community. And we shouldn't just say, oh, we don't have things like that, how we, you know. That's all. I mean, we don't have specific requests at this time because you don't have the money.
Right. Well, I do think that those are valuable projects, and I appreciate you and the Commission bringing those to us because we obviously will be compiling that list as time goes and as we prepare to decide on where that money is going to go. So
Yeah.
It's appreciated, appreciated.
Yeah, as part of our annual duties to satisfy the Hope Dale contract, we have to go to all the towns that connect, that are next to us that have water. And typically, they turn us down. However, I, we have some, we've been making some headway with Bellingham that would like to continue this year. And just tell you, I think it would help us greatly if we told them that we had some funding, not in hand, but being considered by the Select Board for, like that interconnect. You know, we, we know that if Upton had water, we'd have to run a main all the way from San Gabriel's Church. You know, more than a mile just to the town line, and then to bring it to the center of town is, is, is great. And we know the pipeline cost, you know, runs in the millions for that long a distance. But, you know, I'm hoping we could arrive on a course of action and apply some of this money to help expand that.
Yeah.
And, and just tell you, you know, the benefits also, if we were to get off with Hope Dale, although some cases like Route 16, it's good to have Hope Dale. You know, Hope Dale just raised its rates again. And, and we're paying their highest rate. If we were to connect to another town, we might have lower rates and be able to drop the rates for folks. So that's something we're, we're looking at. But again, not, not asking to vote on anything, just wanted to get the discussion going. And appreciate time on that.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Any comments from Select Board members? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Consider/appoint Economic Development Committee candidate. Do we have Mr. Davis here?
Yes, I'm here.
You do?
If you could hear me.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Doing well, thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself and give a bit of background?
Sure.
On your, on your experience?
Yeah, no problem. Anthony Davis, been in, currently live in West Hill, been in Mendon for over eight years now. I'm currently working in the pharmaceutical industry in Boston. Executive Director, oversee Department of Quality Professionals. Been around in that industry for 20-plus years. I oversee the department, I build the department. I have experience in lean, lean and six sigma in project management. Building people, building projects, completing projects, running projects. But I'm really looking here to be a part of the, the goings of Mendon. Been on the sidelines for too long, I feel. I really love Mendon. My kids love Mendon. My wife loves Mendon. We really love it a lot. Really glad we moved here. We, I think we noticed that the first time we, we moved into town, how great it was. And so I really want to be a part of the improvement of well-being of Mendon and its citizens. And really want to be involved with, more involved with each person. Not looking for Mendon's long-term growth and its well-being. So I'm currently right now volunteering on the, the Master Planning Committee. And looking to do more and be a part of the currently open Economic Development Committee.
That's really great. I'm glad to hear that you're, you're enjoying Mendon. It's a, it is a great community, and we need more people to step up like you to, to take part in, in our town government and, and, you know, take an active role as opposed to a passive role. So thank you for, for your interest in this. I don't have any questions. Other members have questions?
I have no questions. Just thank you for, again, for stepping up. It's, I'm glad to see we're seem to get a, be getting a lot of people to fill some of these holes that we have in our, in our boards and committees. And I'm just real happy that you're, you're stepping up to help us out. Thank you very much.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Okay, I will accept the motion.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hold on one sec, sorry. We'll do a pool, Anthony Davis second, for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. All in favor, all in favor.
Kenny, oh, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Your.
Thank you.
Consider appoint local historic district commission candidate, Mr. Tebow, if I say that correctly.
Correct.
Awesome. All right. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a bit of your background?
Sure. I have lived in Mendon since 1998. I love Mendon. I love the Blackstone Valley. I have been involved in historic renovations and preservation for more than 30 years. I'm a registered architect. I specialize in that. I have a number of certifications for restoring masonry, wood, all kinds of projects. And I'm looking forward to helping out any way that I can.
Excellent. Sounds like a good fit.
I think so. I've already been to a meeting and, and we all got along very well. I think it's great. I really appreciate that the town even has a district commission. I think it's great.
Well, there's also just a regular historical commission, too, that if there's any vacancies on that, it sounds, it sounds like that your expertise would be greatly appreciated over there as well.
Any way I can help.
Excellent.
I was on the, I was on the ZBA years ago for a few years, and I know once you get in, you start, you start picking up all kinds of jobs. It's great.
That's right. Okay, I will accept the motion.
So moved to a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Morally, aye.
Kenny, oh, aye. Real aye. Thank you, Mr. Tebow.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're very welcome. Thanks for appointing me.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Consider appoint Finance Committee candidate. We have.
I would, I'd request that we pass over this until the next meeting. There really isn't urgency. There are, I think there are going to be three openings. There are two right now, and I know there were two candidates with to be interviewed last night, and there's a third one who had actually expressed his interest initially last year. His name is Ron Zamuto. And he's indicated he's available to be interviewed next week. So I'd like to have all three of them interviewed and then have the Finance Committee make a recommendation like our policy.
Okay, our policy doesn't require that, but what I would say is that we've received only one letter of interest, from my understanding. So
No, we have, we have another one that was received last year. I can, and he reminded me, I asked him for it again. And I can, I can forward it to all of you if you like, again.
So, but there's three spots, possibly three candidates.
I don't know if there's, I know there's, I know there's, I know for sure there's obviously two, right? Because there's going to be mine and also the one that Brian Guzman vacated over a year ago, and now one of the members says that they're going to step down, so there probably will be three. And I don't know which one is for a year, which one is for two years, which one is for three years.
So, okay, so there's, okay, we'll just call it two right now because we don't have a letter of resignation, but we only have two applicants.
No, we have three applicants.
Okay, where's the, where's the third one? I only know, well, I know, I know one, and I know the one that you just mentioned from last year. Now that I know that, what's the third one?
The third, the other one that was on our agenda. I'm looking for his email right now. He had sent me, sent it to the FinCom. His name is Jason Rogers. And I'll forward that.
Why has, why haven't, why didn't the FinCom interview those candidates last night?
I, well, I can tell you that originally there were two of them to be interviewed. And then I've been waiting for a month to get a written clarification about running the meeting or continuing on the board in the dual role. I didn't have an answer, so I asked the clerk to run the meeting, and I honestly don't know what happened. I know that they're going to do one next week, but I don't know why they didn't interview them, but I was not on the call of the meeting. But they were, maybe, Mike, can you, Mike Jones, I see you're on there. Can you?
You're on mute.
I was also present. I can speak to the meeting.
I was, I was interviewed last night, and I was questioned by the board members a few different times, and they thanked me and I thanked them, and then I left the meeting. I don't know what else happened, but I was interviewed last night.
Okay. Well, you said we have three potential openings and three candidates. Correct?
Yes. Well, I know, yeah.
Okay.
I, we have, we definitely have three candidates and we have two potential openings. I guess this one, it looks like there's, on here, there's, there's set up to appoint one for June 30th, 2024, which I guess is a three-year term. I don't know if that's mine or if that's, if that's Brian's.
That's probably Brian's because you haven't formally resigned.
There's no, right, there's no vacancy other than Brian's at the moment.
Well, mine's.
You haven't, you haven't resigned yet.
Right, well, I haven't, well, that's true, too. But, but either way, it, it, we know it's definitely going to have to end in another week, right?
Right. So so we have one, sorry, again, back, back to the three, because I'm still confused. The Board of Selectmen received one email for the position that's open. Now, I know you have one that was sent to the FinCom last year, which is great. That's, that's great. If that, if that person's still interested, they, they should send an email to the Board of Selectmen.
Actually, actually, that one was sent to Laura, and she forwarded it to me. I don't know if she sent it to the board as well.
It was a year ago one?
I think we're arguing about nothing. I'm not.
We're not arguing. We're just, we're just trying to sort through what we have in front of us. So well, we're asking to wait. I just want to make sure that if, if, if there's a reason to wait, let's wait. If there's no reason to wait, let's, let's appoint
Well, there's two issues. There's two, well, there's a couple of issues. I, I know that, that Mike has indicated he has a desire to run for Select Board again, I'm assuming next year. This is a three-year term, and I'd be interested if we have a, if we're going to have a, a one-year term, a two-year term, and a three-year term. I'd rather see somebody get appointed to one if they know they're going to resign in a year. Then they just be on the one-year term. If they're going to serve for three years, then we should put them on the three-year term. And if we're going to interview three and then make recommendations, I just, I, I know it's not required, but I, I don't see the urgency to appointing somebody until we just finish the process. But again, it's just
I, I don't think.
One member.
Yeah, I don't think that, that we should take into consideration whether or not someone is interested in running for office.
No, that's not, it's not about running for office. It's, it's about whether they're planning to serve a full three-year term. Or if there's going to be a one or a two-year term that would open up that we could appoint them and then get it back in a sequence.
But we may find that Mike gets on the Finance Committee and says, I think I'm going to stay here for a little bit, and then decides to not run ever, or decides to run. And so I don't think that's factor. So while we have Mike at this time, why don't you talk a little about, I, I think a lot of us know a little bit about your background, but why you're interested in the Finance Committee and what your, your view or your, your, yeah, just talk about your background.
Yeah. So basically, I moved to Mendon in 2013. I run an electrical contracting company out of town. Like I said, I love the town. And basically, my background on the finance side and the money side is I've basically been running my, my family's business financially for probably about the last 20 years, bidding, estimating, project management, all of those things, all in real-world, real-time scenarios. It's definitely a skill that I have. I'm looking forward to it. I was actually made aware of this position by Mike prior to the, the election. And I was like, yeah, I mean, if I didn't get here, I would love to help. I mean, my end game goal is I'm in a position in life where I have the opportunity to help out, and I want to give back and do something for the community, and this is a great way to do it. And I definitely have the skill set to, to assist in this. A lot to learn, but there's still be a lot of fun.
Well, that's great. I think, you know, it's clear that your running for office has kind of maybe propelled you and your interest in being more involved in town government. in being more involved in town government, so.
Yeah, I enjoyed running. I had a great time.
That's good to hear. Not a lot of people can always say they had a great time running for office. Are there questions? Mike, do you have some specific questions you'd like to ask or to Lonnie?
I'd like to, I would like to watch the, the recording of last night, but, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure Mike did a great job explaining the same thing he just told us, so I don't have any questions.
Yeah. Kim, did, you know, what was kind of the, the result of their conversations then?
So his, the reception to his interview was very positive, and they concluded by saying that they seemed to be in favor, and Mike said that he would welcome the position, and then we switched to a couple of other topics, but at the end, there was some confusion about how many positions were actually open since it had been advertised at three, but really there was only two, and they wanted to know who the third one was and who was the second one. That kind of got confusing. And then whether or not there were additional candidates, I clarified and said that this office had only received one so far, and they responded with, well, they would rather wait until towards the fall because there seemed to be no urgency about filling the position to see if there were other candidates so that the appointment could be fair, but they did recognize that ultimately the appointment is up to the Board of Selectmen and that that's the process. And if they had the opportunity and other people wanted to come forward from the ad that was in the paper, that they would set up a meeting next week to interview additional candidates.
Okay, so I think, you know, based on the fact that this has been a vacancy for some time, and we're having other vacancies down the pipeline, we have someone very interested in this role, I would like to just get this moving. I mean, it's, it's just a waste of time to, to keep talking about these things in circles, so.
I, I would agree. I, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mike Jones to the position of Finance Committee. Hold on. For a term to expire June 30th, 2024, and, and I make this because Mike has, has obviously showed some extreme interest in running for the Board, for the Select Board, and was directed, you know, by multiple people that the Finance Committee, if you, if that didn't work out or to run for the Select Board, that Finance Committee is a great place to begin your journey in, in town government because you get to touch every aspect of town government and finance. And, and the fact that he's been diligent in trying to get this position is, is a reason why I'm going to, so moved.
Yeah, I'll second it. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Thank you very much.
I look forward to doing it.
One down, couple to go, I guess.
Thank you very much, guys. I look forward to helping out.
Thank you. Consider renewal of junk dealer license, Dave Lowell for Main Street. Take a motion.
I make a motion to, to renew David Lowell's junk dealer license. It says pending receipt deposit routing slips. I don't know if that's happened or any or.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Morally, aye.
Tenio, aye. Real aye. Consider finance software contract. Ms. Newman.
We just want to give a second. Oh, perfect. Our Finance Director is on, and our, our Town Accountant is also online. And this is a project we have been working on the last couple of months. Selectment Tenio was also involved in the process. I'll basically give you a quick overview. As you know, for the last couple of years, we have been talking about potentially upgrading our financial system, including the chart of accounts specifically, probably seven years since I've been here. With the opportunity of the CARES Act and the remote workplace changes, IT expenses essentially came 100% reimbursed, and this type of, you know, technological advances so that people could work more remotely at home became supported through outside funding, and so we decided to revisit the process during the middle of this pandemic. This group in particular viewed three different vendor, well, two vendors, three different products, and ultimately decided on this one that we're bringing forward tonight. There is a number on this agenda related to the quote that we got. I will just point out that only half of that is actually a hard cost. The second half is estimates based upon work time to implement. So I would just make the motion up to a certain amount, okay? So that, you know, if that changes, I just, and so, and I will also tell you that the, we have put aside in the remaining half of the funding for this from what's left of CARES, and that's the end. CARES.
So you said this is being funded by the CARES Fund?
Yeah, so it's about $50,000, but the actual software thing is about 18, and it'll be 18 annually. We pay 15 about right now. It's a cloud-based system rather than the KBS we have now. It's going to take about a year or so to really make that switch, hopefully sooner than later, but a lot of the costs come in, the training after the fact, making sure that it's working, but you really don't know until it's in-house and we're working on it. For more technical questions than that, I'll default to Lonnie. He'll tell. He'll know, but when we talk about the benefits and why we're excited, you should talk to the Finance Director and the Accountant, since they'll primarily be the primary users of it.
Okay, Ms. Curie, what, what do you have to say about this?
Well, I would just echo some of Kim's comments already, just about the need for a new platform, given that the KBS system is nearing its, its maximized use on, you know, kind of how we've leveraged it over the years. I think that based on what Kim said, we've explored a few different platforms and softwares that would give way to some scaling, so to speak, to some of the capabilities across the organization. And realistically, right now, there's, there's a lot of interdepartmental channels that are very siloed, and the opportunity to migrate to a new platform is really going to bring some streamlining and efficiency to how we do business. It'll increase our communication. It will increase our efficiency. And I think that what I've seen through demos, through some of the, the RFP information that I've read through, and really seen some hands-on experience with the, the platform that we're looking at, which is Springbrook, it really scales well to what we need, how we can use it, and really offers some solutions to some of the challenges that I think is, as a town that we've encountered. And I'll just, I'll throw it out there, viewpoint being one of them, and building workflow, sorry, not building, workflow processes and procedures that really become a little bit challenging in terms of how we can leverage the current technology versus how we need to leverage technology in order to keep people informed but not bog down a process, and that's just one example of many, but it definitely offers some, you know, real-time solutions to some of the things that we are looking to solve for in the near future. And the other exciting part about it from the accounting end is that there's a lot of manual things that happen day-to-day with regards to reconciliation and balancing of accounts. So one of the integration points that's really exciting that Eric and I had talked through and that looked really promising are sort of one-stop shopping as it relates to that recon process. So I think that that's another big benefit that's added there. And so the, the last thing I'll mention is down the road, they do, they are heavily investing in this particular platform, and when I say they, I mean the KBS, the KBS folks that own Springbrook and these other subsidiary platforms. So a lot of where they're going with this really give promise to some additional capabilities that we may not need right now but could be useful going forward. So that was another reason that we sort of leaned this way. In addition, the fact that they already, they already service us on the current platform, so a migration would prove to be a little bit less clunky, if you will, because they already know our product. They already know our business. They already know how we operate and how we work. So it would be a bit more of a seamless transition to this particular platform. So for all of those reasons, and I'm sure more, you know, it made sense to move in this direction.
Sure. So did you mention that KBS is still, this is a KBS system or the company is, owns KBS?
Yeah, so, so there's a, there's, yeah, and it goes back years and years, but, and Eric, you can jump in here if you remember any of the specifics. I didn't bring those particular notes with me tonight, but bottom line is there's a parent company that owned Springbrook, which offered a particular platform, and then they acquired other software companies along the way. And so they still service those software companies, but then are investing in their, I would say, their proprietary platform, which is Springbrook, and then are really looking at some of their legacy systems like KBS. You know, they'll still service them and still, they'll still hold those clients, but the idea really is to move these clients along into, you know, the more current technology that's available. So we would be one of those companies that they would walk through a migration with.
Got it. Have, were you or Eric or Kim have any conversations with communities that are using this software?
Go ahead, Eric. Okay, I'm gonna, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Well, that's the thing about, it's used across the country, but we'll be the first one in Massachusetts to use it, this platform. So they have customers across the country, so that's why we actually vetted it out a couple of times. That's why we're so diligent, looking it over, and we're really excited. We think it's a huge improvement over what we currently have, but to answer your question directly, no, we'd be the first ones in Massachusetts to migrate, but their plan is, they have like, between Softright and KBS customers, they have over 100 customers in Massachusetts that they want to transition to this Springbrook product, and we'd kind of be the trailblazers, so to speak. But it's, the chart of accounts is in such a huge need of improvement, and we saw what it could do. We were very impressed, and they did have this other product that they wanted us to try out at first. It was called, they were going to take KBS and just put it in the cloud, and basically it was like putting two tin cans in the sky, you know. We, we did not like it, and they, after a while, in your conscience, they couldn't recommend that, and that's why we started going with the Springbrook, which is a much more robust product. It's going to serve us well in the future, absolutely.
Well, just Mendon showing our true leadership once again.
Yeah, exactly.
Eric, how many other customers do you have in Massachusetts besides us, besides Mendon?
Well, right, we've dealt with over 100 cities and towns at various times, but currently we're probably dealing with like 28 right now with various projects.
So have any of those other 28 switched off of KBS to something else?
Not yet. There's not many people that are on KBS itself. There was only like a handful. Most of them are on Softright, but Springbrook has started doing the dog and pony show with all these other cities and towns already. Some of the towns that we work in, like they said, we got Worthington, this and that, so they've, the same conversations that they're having with Mendon, they're having with the other cities and towns in Massachusetts. We're just a little bit ahead of the curve because no matter what, we wanted to upgrade the chart of accounts regardless of a conversion, and we found this was the opportunity to do both at once. You know, instead of just using the same KBS, because no matter what, we want a new chart of accounts, whether we use the existing KBS now or go to something new, that's what kind of drove it.
Now, what about the other company, the other, the other municipalities you deal with that are using something different? Is there a reason why you didn't want to use the same platform that these other ones had already switched to?
Well, right, right now, the, they're basically, all these other communities are basically using like Softright, which is getting a little old and tired, and like KBS, which is getting a little old and tired itself. They really haven't put any money into those products, and I think it's because this big company, Springbrook, bought both those products, and they didn't buy it because those softwares were so great. They just bought it because they wanted the customer base. And so the Springbrook is a more robust product, and that's where they're putting all their money in. That's why we wanted to transition to that product.
And Mike, maybe to answer another one of your questions on the other side of things, we did explore another platform called Munis. I don't know if it's familiar, but essentially it's a, it's a more robust system as well, but it also was a bit more than we needed right now. It was something that is for some of the larger towns. Franklin, for example, uses it. I spent some time talking with the treasure collector over there, and I know some other colleagues use that as well, but the price was also like, what was it, Eric, like four or five times the amount as it would be for Springbrook, so it just didn't make sense to make that jump right now. And again, like I said, some of the reasons we talked about before regarding Springbrook were that, you know, we were already on one of their platforms that they serviced, and it would be arguably an easier migration to something that was one of their products already with, you know, given the history of what they know about us.
I just, Lonnie and Kim know, but you're not, you're muted, so we couldn't hear what you were discussing.
No, I, I was just asking a simple question about, because I was going to bring this up, and I just couldn't remember the number. Was two, roughly, we looked at Munis a couple of years back, and they, it was when cloud was really brand new, they offered an in-house solution that we had the servers for, was to the tune of roughly 300,000, and I believe to go to the cloud back then, their cloud solution was going to cost close to a million dollars. Right, and it was an annual cost too. It wasn't just like a one-time cost. Looking at what Munis offers, so Munis is, is in the same boat as, 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 sorry, the one we're talking about here. Sorry. Yep, so Springbrook, that it, Munis was bought, Munis, Ivy, all these, there was a company that went, went through, Tyler Technologies went through and bought all these companies up, and they're now trying to put in what their, their, their main one was. So you have Infinite Visions, which a lot, like Milford uses, Milbury uses, Munis, which again, like they were saying, is used by Franklin and some other communities. I believe even, either Blackstone's using Munis or Ivy, I can't remember. Anyhow, they're big, huge dollar stuff, and the roadmap, and again, like, like Jody was saying, that it, it is so robust, more than what we would definitely need at the moment. The nice part about Springbrook is their roadmap is, is getting there to where they're going. So for us to gain at the cost that we're getting it at, it was a huge, was a huge piece to be able to stay as close to KBS as we can and get that better technology. Look to me from an IT perspective, that it was, it was the best way to go, getting the best thing for the buck, and their roadmap, they're very aggressive on their roadmap to get that, those other pieces implemented, which will be just, you know, a bonus to us as they get added in. So that's what I liked about it. I liked their cloud piece, how it runs, and the convenience of it as we transition, as our plan here in-house is to transition the servers out to get everything out to the cloud. And that was the biggest piece was, was the KBS piece holding us up. So now that they, we've kind of settled on a solution, we're going to be, we're going to be able to expedite what our plan was here in-house.
So if, if I'm understanding this, that Kim, Jody, Lonnie, and Eric have all vetted this and think it's the best choice, and there's about, in this, in this, I know it's just under $50,000 roughly, what, roughly 18 or 19 of it is the actual software, then the other 30 is, is training and support?
Would be, would be the, the additional cost is training and implementation, which is, they just, they've given a number.
Putting it in place, making it run.
Exactly. It's like a handheld migration, is what they described it as.
The moving forward cost would just be that nine, just call it 20, so it's a pretty easy number, 20 a year, that would, and still include support and whatnot, but your day-to-day support.
So you're.
One question.
So Mr. Chairman, you're looking for a motion to authorize Kim, as the town administrator, to sign the contract for up to $49,487.40?
Yeah, Kim, you want, you want that, that number or 50? Can't hear you. 50?
Yes. No, 49 is fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Good.
I just want the ability to break it out over a number of fiscal years. So up to is perfect for invoicing.
So, so moved. As I read.
Think we have a second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Morally, aye.
Tini, oh, aye.
Real aye. Okay, I think that's something that's, uh, been in the works for years. So it's good to, final seven years. So it's good to see progress.
Well, thank you very much. We really, really appreciate this.
Yeah, we do.
That's excellent.
It's gonna be great. We're gonna love it. It's gonna be great. Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have one-year appointment. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna read the one-year appointment. And then what we'll do is if there are any appointments that you want to hold separately for a separate vote, just let me know and I will, I will note that. So, let me read down. So, um, actually, no, I'm gonna read them out. ADA Coordinator Kevin Rudden, Affordable Housing Coordinator William McHenry, Building Inspector Assistant John Erickson. Hold. Okay. CMRPC Bill Ambrosino. CMRPC Planning Bill Ambrosino. Custodian of Soldiers and Sailors Graves, Robin Fletcher. Election Warden Catherine Rich. Election Warden Deputy Nancy Flurry. Emergency Management Director Dave Cursey. Emergency Management Deputy Director Mark Pacino. Master Plan Committee, Bill Ambrosino. Procurement Officer Highway Alan Tetra. Procurement Officer Chief Kimberly Newman. Town Council Murphy Hesitumie Lehane. Veterans Agent, Robin Fletcher. Veterans Burial Agent, Robin Fletcher. Wiring Inspector Jack Ganga. Wiring Inspector Assistant Albert Jones. ZBA Alternate, John D'Amelio. ZBA Alternate Tom Morales.
Yeah, hold.
Okay. So, um, I'll accept the motion to approve the one-year appointments for the, for the previously read, uh, positions that were not held with a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Let, let me just make a caveat. The only reason I put hold on the last one, obviously, he's my son. So I'm gonna abstain from that. So I don't know if we need to do that separately or if I can just abstain.
We'll do it separately. Okay, there are. So maybe a.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Tini, oh, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Okay, um.
I'm gonna abstain from the Erickson vote, please.
Okay, so.
Can I discuss it? Why? So I'm assuming he's the assistant? Because his term as assistant is up and, and.
It's an annual appointment.
Okay, so is, is there a reason we can't just make him the building inspector?
I mean, we could.
So, well, so I, I'll, I'll speak to it, I guess. Because the actual building commissioner wouldn't be, is not up, correct? Am I wrong on that?
Is that not an annual appointment too? I mean, obviously, because I don't.
Well, this might be out of turn. You know, the dates may be different. So we would want to continue his appointment as assistant and then make the change when the actual commissioner position becomes available. We would do the swap then, in my opinion.
So is the commissioner, the, the senior inspector and then the, it's an assistant billing inspector? Or what, how, how does the, you gotta educate me a little bit on here.
So, so my understanding is, originally, I think John was the commissioner because our current commissioner did not have the qualifications at the time. So, so he was a, a local building inspector doing the work, but we needed to have a building commissioner and John was acting as our building commissioner, but not doing the inspection. And then when our current commissioner became qualified, he became the commissioner and John Erickson became the assistant. And is acting as a local inspector, doing our, our inspection. Under, does that understand that, Mike?
No. Who is?
The current building.
It has to be, it has to be a, it has to be a hierarchy. Maybe, maybe Cindy, maybe you can explain. There has to be a hierarchy, right? There has to be someone who's in charge and then, because why would he be an assistant? If he, if he's, he's not the principal, there's somebody else who is the chief building inspector as you termed at the, the building commissioner.
Right, that's.
In the past during vacancies of the building inspector, the assistant steps in and fulfills the role of the building inspector.
So who is the building inspector?
The currently appointed building inspector is Tim Icardi. The building commissioner is John Erickson. He's also the assistant building inspector.
So the building commissioner is also an assistant inspector?
Correct.
Alright, and when does the building inspector's term expire?
I think it's expired. It's expiring this July 1st.
Why, why wouldn't it be on here then?
Well, that's another story.
Alright, so, I, I, and again, I, I guess my point is, if the building inspector, go ahead Cindy.
Without getting too far into the weeds, if you have noticed an appointment for a particular position, I don't think you can do anything other than yes or no for that particular appointment tonight.
I see what you're.
Is the, if the building, if the building inspector's position is expired or expiring? And I believe.
It's not on the agenda.
I know it's not on the agenda. Right.
So we can't act on that tonight.
But I can ask, can I ask a question about it? I mean, did he not?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
She's addressing what you had said.
What, what, Kim, I can't hear you. I, I can't.
The building inspector, a few years ago, and I don't remember exactly where, but I want to say about three years ago, we changed the way in which we paid the building inspector. We used to pay them per, they were appointed and we paid them per inspection, essentially. And then we changed that position to an employee of the town and we paid them an hourly rate. Where we are in relation to where that appointment is in regards to the town, I'm not sure if three years, one year or whatever. Um, because, you know, that position has been vacated for a while because of an illness. And so the assistant building inspector has basically been fulfilling the role for the last year or so. So, um, but an employee can be on staff, um, whether they exceed their appointment or not. He's an employee.
So I guess, again, my question is, why is John Erickson not being put forward as the building inspector?
Well, frankly, I think that if we're gonna make a change, right? I think that essentially we're filling a new, a position. That's a, that's a, a employee. And when we, when we are filling up an employee position, I believe that we typically advertise for that role and interview candidates and fill the role that way. I don't think that we should just give it to someone not to say that he doesn't deserve to, you know, he can apply for the role if that's an open position and then we go through the process of hiring. I don't think we should just, it's not really, in my mind, a committee appointment type of situation.
Well, and again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, right? I guess I don't know and I'm asking and I'm not.
I'm just saying in my, in my view of it, it would be a new employee in a new hire for that position and it should be an advertised, um, situation.
I want to add two, I want to add two things. One is we have not received official notification that there is a vacancy in the other position. So we would want to secure that first, obviously, if we were gonna hire. Um, and two, I'm very pleased with the performance of the person who has filled in as the assistant and would like them to continue on in whatever capacity. And that three, the position that we're considering tonight is that he remains in the role of assistant building official, which is what we need him to do until we sort this situation out. So to, just to simplify the process tonight, I just, you know, since we have a lot of appointments, I'm just doing a recap.
Yep. Okay. Any further, uh, Cindy, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, if this is what this person was being appointed for, that's what's before you now. If there is or becomes another position, then you can make that decision at that point in time. I don't think you have the authority to appoint him out of the blue without notice to anyone that that is not the position that is being filled tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, uh, so we're voting on, was there a most and mid? Mike, did you make the motion on that?
Um, I, sure, because Lonnie had abstained, so I make the motion to appoint John Erickson as the Assistant Building Inspector.
Yep, and the term's gonna expire, uh, June 30th, 2022. I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Morally.
And abstaining? Sorry, Tini, oh, abstain. Thank you. Okay, and then we have, the other hold was on the ZBA Alternate, Tom Morally. Accept the motion.
Yep, hang on. I moved to appoint Tom Morally as ZBA Alternate, term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Step down and second. All in favor?
Tini, oh, aye.
Real aye. Abstaining.
Morally abstain.
Thank you. Alright, three-year appointment. We're gonna do the same. Well, I don't think, are there any on this list, gentlemen, that you're gonna need to?
I do not see any abstain, I do not see a reason to abstain.
Neither. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the three-year appointments as listed on the agenda with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second. Good. All in favor?
Morally, aye.
Tini, oh, aye. Real aye. Easy. Consider municipal hearing officer appointment. I'll accept the motion.
I move to appoint Laura Sink, joint to P, as the municipal hearing goddess return to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Morally, aye.
Tini, oh, aye. Real aye. Maori Street update. We have Mr. Erickson.
Oh, um, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we also have Lori Ann Brazza on with us, who's our assistant zoning enforcement officer. And Lori has been doing the primary enforcement on this project. I'd like to let her introduce, um, you know, what she's done or what we've done, but she's done primarily and, um, give the board an update on where we've been and where we're, where we're heading next week.
Great, thank you. Lori Ann?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna give you a brief timeline of where we've been involved, how we got involved and to where we are today. So originally back, um, August of 2020, we received a complaint. Um, John and I actually did a couple of site visits in, um, September and in October of 2020. Back, um, September of 2020, we sent a cease and desist, um, to Maori Street, um, to ask him to cease all any sort of operation. Uh, he did, of course, not comply. Um, so I did a application for criminal complaint dated, um, November 6th of 2020 with the Milford District Court. Um, I then received a hearing, um, to go in front of the clerk magistrate, um, on November, uh, the end of November, November 19th, 2020. Uh, that particular day, um, the resident of Maori Street, I'm sorry, I can't, uh, pronounce his last name, so I'm gonna say Kevin. He did show to the hearing and after speaking to him, um, and the clerk magistrate, Mr. Carrigan, he stated that he needed at least 30 days to find a place to move his landscaping business that he was operating out of Maori Street. Uh, Mr. Carrigan did give him those 30 days and we were given another date on December 15th to come back, in front of Mr. Carrigan, um, to figure out where we're gonna go if he had complied. Unfortunately, he did not comply. And Mr. Carrigan actually continued the hearing, um, to February 13th of 2021. And of course, COVID hit. Uh, Kevin, the resident of Maori Street, did not attend that hearing. So I was instructed by the, uh, clerk magistrate to put together an affidavit stating all the facts and dates of everything that went on. And I gave him an update, letting him know that the resident, uh, Kevin did not comply. Based on my affidavit, he then, um, issued, um, a complaint. And then, um, Kevin then was arraigned in front of, um, the, the judge himself at the district court, um, April 29th of 2021. Um, part of his conditions, um, after the hearing, he was to adhere to the original cease and desist that we had issued back in September. Um, he said he would do that. Today, um, I have reached out to the clerk, excuse me, the district attorney and let him know that he has not complied. I did go by this morning on Maori Street. I didn't see any, any movement, but it did make the district attorney aware that to date he has not complied. His next hearing is, um, actually on Monday, June 28th, where I will, um, attend the hearing, um, at the Milford District Court and that's for a pre-trial hearing. So that's where we are today.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update. Are, I guess, if going forward, if you could just provide updates to Ms. Newman so that she can pass those along to us as things progress, that would be greatly appreciated. And then, um, if there are any other cases that, that are similar to these when they, or they end up in, in a court setting, if you could also keep Ms. Newman apprised of those, that would be, be great too. So appreciate the thorough update and, um, hopeful that this will be resolved without too much.
Can I, can I just ask for clarification? So.
Go ahead.
So when you, you went to see the, the clerk, uh, Mr. Carrigan the last time, or you have an up, you have a meeting on, or a hearing again this coming Monday?
Actually, it's actually, um, Kevin, he actually was arraigned in front of a judge. So it's actually a pre-trial hearing. So he actually was charged with the, uh, you know, violation of a town ordinance prohibiting the use of property. So he's been criminally charged, um, with this violation. He was given, um, an opportunity to just be arraigned, it's just an arraignment. And part of the condition of the arraignment was that he was to cease and desist next and then was given another court date to come back, which is Monday. And hopefully we can come to an agreement with him that he did comply. But as of today, he hasn't complied. So I'll be speaking to the district attorney, looking for some sort of fine and, um, some sort of condition or some sort of guidance to what is the next step if he doesn't comply.
Alright, so there's, so this is a pre-trial, pre-trial conference or hearing, meaning that there hasn't been a bench trial yet. And you're hoping that you're gonna come up with some, that he'll somehow plead and, um.
Right.
Right. But the issue is, he still hasn't complied, so he's still operating the business out of that location, right?
Yes.
So this is an ongoing violation that, that, um, so as far as the charges go, those charges were back from the, the original hearing, but at, to this date, he's. but at, to this day, he's still committing the same crime continually.
Right.
I understand that.
Yep. So what usually happens, I'm not, I don't know if you're familiar, that when, obviously when people, um, we continuously try to work with them. Um, as I said previously, John and I actually had two site visits and conversations with this resident. And he agreed that he knew that he wasn't supposed to operate his business out of the property. And obviously he did not comply. So the next step is to go to the district court and apply for what's called a show cause hearing, where it's in front of a clerk magistrate, where he's not charged. Um, based on those facts and giving him an opportunity to try to comply, he did not comply. The district, the, excuse me, the clerk magistrate then, um, arraigned him, had him arraigned in front of the, the, the district judge. So he is officially, um, I guess, arraigned with the violation of a town ordinance.
So he's been charged?
He has, exactly. So now it's just a process. So he was arraigned once and now he has, the second time he comes, he's appearing in front of the judge. Um, he's at 9:00 AM on Monday, the 28th at the district court. So that's what, so.
Is he represented?
Um, the first hearing, he was not. He was there, but he was there by himself.
And the town hasn't gotten any notice that he's hired counsel or?
No.
Okay.
And if I could just, if I could just add a little bit, as far as going forward, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um, it, it's kind of unusual to get this far when somebody's so clearly in violation and have them not voluntarily come to compliance. Um, we don't typically have to go, ever go to, I don't wanna say ever, but it's un, it's unusual to go to trial at the district court level for this. And depending on how this goes, this may be something we'll have to consult with town council and, uh, maybe taking an additional step, uh, look to it's taking an additional step at superior court. Um, which I don't.
That's where it's going with these questions, right?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think it's something we wanna talk about. It, it, this junction and open meeting is where strategizing on how to best remedy this, um, violation. But it's, it's, it's something where we've already considered in-house and maybe pursuing.
Okay, so we get to that point, we will likely have an executive session on that. Um, any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you both so much.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for this. I know, I've, I've seen a lot happening over there just because I'm in that area quite a bit, so. Um, definitely frustrating to watch.
Again, thank you all.
Thank you. Good night. Our next topic is discuss override. Um, Tim, we don't have any specifics on this, right? We just had it on here in case we.
Right, we had put it on here because we had received a number of emails that had some follow-up questions for counsel, but we have since resolved those. So, um, I am assuming that we're all set here.
Yes, so, right, so I, uh, I had talked to, I think, pretty much everybody that sent an email. I think I even talked to them, yeah, I talked to everybody on the phone. Um, there was, uh, let me just make sure I get the name right here. The last. Yeah, I thought he filed, anyway, the, the last gentleman I spoke with, we went over the, the process and the law together, uh, as far as how it flows. And, you know, because the question had come up, do we, we always, we all said, oh, well, we've always just been told this is how it is. Is this really how it is? So the law pretty much spells it out, uh, that, you know, I suppose we don't have to go back for a ballot, but it would be, we would be crazy to try to find that money in our budget. Uh, especially at the moment, we'd have to close half the town or if not more, um, to, to meet that, that number. So, uh, I think that, uh, that he was satisfied. Uh, he definitely wasn't satisfied with the process, uh, which I think that, that's the biggest frustration. People say that, well, we voted no, why are we back again? Uh, so he was, uh, he was gonna see if we could pursue, if he could pursue it further to find out if changes can be made at the legislative level. So, uh, he was gonna get back to, uh, get back to me on that and, and let me know how he made out. And I said if we needed any help from us, that we would be here to help him. So, uh, at the, at the, at this moment, uh, as Kim stated, everything's pretty calm. Everybody's questions have been answered and it looks pretty good.
I, if I can just make just one point that, that you, you made, Lonnie, just to follow on what you said. You know, I, I think we had to go to a vote because just like the townspeople rejected the override at the ballot.
Sorry.
That's, uh, that's part of our role needs. Um, I, I think, you know, the townspeople at the, at the town meeting unanimously approved the budget with the funding the way it was. So, you know, I think the, I think the ballot vote, the second ballot vote was the only acceptable option that we had to go to. And now if that's rejected, now I think it's back to the school committee. And if they, they can either cut their budget or ask for a joint town meeting, right? I mean, that's the next step. I'm asking that question Cindy or to, in general.
Yeah, I, I almost wanna say that by the way the law reads, uh, I, I correct if I'm wrong, actually. It looks like it says you just go directly to town, joint town meeting.
If, if, if it doesn't pass, if the override doesn't pass this time around, you go to what is affectionately called by everyone as a tent meeting between the two towns. And, um, given that the budget is the same and that Upton has passed it, we can assume they're likely to pass it again. And if that happens and it gets passed, then I believe you're looking at then another special town meeting for the appropriation because you only authorized an override. So you're potentially looking at the cost of this election, the proportionate share of the tent meeting and depending on the outcome, another town meeting. So.
Yeah, wait.
Right, because we, if we were, we would have to go and have a special town meeting in order to essentially, we, we have $800,000 in stabilization. And it, I mean, we'd have to make cuts and then vote to transfer money from stabilization. We'd have to get approval to do that. So, or wherever else we could take it from, which is only there and only our budget.
I mean, this isn't a situation where both towns had a problem with the budget and it went back to the school committee and the school committee listened to both towns and knew that they had to do something. This is a situation where the towns are split and the school committee stuck to their guns. And then the way the town meeting vote went, um, if all you can do is pass an override unless you get, as Kim said, town meeting authorization for another source of funding. And if, you know, you get into the situation where you haven't had your town meeting and we don't have the budget, then you get into the 112 budget process, which is a nightmare for everybody.
Right, it just seems, I mean, at the end of this, it seems out potentially outrageous and possibly illegal that you could have the residents of Mendon vote no twice on an override and then have the residents of Upton decide for us what our budget should be and what our residents should be taxed. And I just, the process needs to, we need to, we need to look at it further next time around.
What, so you're, you're saying that if, if we go to this tent meeting and ultimately the, the, the people at that, at the tent meeting, um, vote to fund the budget, then we just have to, we just have to take money from the existing budget? And if, we only have to have a town meeting to do it if we're gonna take money out of, if we're gonna transfer money out of stabilization, right?
Right now, your, your town meeting vote was to level fund it unless the override picks up the difference.
Right.
So it's my opinion that if you come down to having to fund this increased amount and you do not have an override to fund that portion, you don't have any town meeting authorization to spend from anyplace else.
Right, so that joint town meeting doesn't take the place of our own town meeting. It just decides the number, of funding of a number.
Correct.
Correct.
So what if the number is, again, set at the, the same number? And we go to our town meeting for appropriation and the vote is no?
Then it gets out of your control and then I'd have to do more research. Standing is you're in a 112 budget until Desi and everyone else can get things resolved. But ultimately, that number gets funded.
Right, the, 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 according to the, the way the law was written, the, that you get a, again, the 112 budget is set on the previous year, not the current one that they want, and then Desi gets to make the final thing.
Correct.
Hmm. Well, we really need to have a good.
This is off, this is often a situation that arises when both towns don't like the number the school committee has set, so they're both pushing the school committee to change that number. And, but that's not what we have here. We happen to have a very, they said yes, we said no.
But I, hang on, hang on. What, what, I, I know we're saying they said yes, they said no. They were able to fund it within their budget because the previous overrides that they had, that, that, they have a bunch of money. They're, they're more affluent in, in, in their budget amounts. So they're able to just fit it in there, whereas we couldn't. So we had to go to, to ask for an override. We said no. So it's not that they said, if they, I bet you, it might've been a different story if they had to get an override too, but they didn't wanna screw up another override they were asking for.
Right.
Lonnie, you might be absolutely 100% correct. But unfortunately, it, 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 being right doesn't help much in this situation because the, the vote town meeting took said you can't do anything other than an override to fund this excess amount.
Right.
But you are absolutely right. I mean, you know, you might've had a different vote had you had different sets of financial circumstances. And it is unfortunate and it's just, it's not gonna, you know, it is what it is, unfortunately.
Kim, Kim had a comment?
Sure, so Cindy, I have a, um, a, a thought and a concern beyond just the basics of the, the budget. I mean, because our budget is only $8 million and essentially this is 10% of our operating budget if we have to come back and take it. Um, for July 1, uh, what about the contracts that we have in place that potentially we might not be able to fund? I mean, how is that gonna be handled? I mean, like, how, uh, do we have to hurry up and meet with all of our unions? Um, and then, like, how are we gonna do that in time? Like, how is that happening?
That's a question I'd prefer to wait to answer to see what exactly we're dealing.
Me too, but I mean realistically.
How with you?
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, the fact of the matter is, if this number stays the same, we are, we are negotiating with a number of employees in a certain way. If this isn't something that's getting funded without substantial cuts to our operating budget. And so I just, logistically, you know, I wanna, you know, get ready, so, but.
Basically.
Let's get through the next, the, the next.
Well, yep.
Vote, and then if we need to have this conversation, we can have this conversation.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's reasonable we're gonna have it anyway for this year going forward. So I mean, I think it's gonna happen a year and I think we're gonna have to be ready to do it, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I just say, be, be thinking of this issue as, as we approach. Because it's, it's gonna be a hot topic.
Yeah.
All right, I think we are done. We're not doing an executive session tonight.
Yeah, I was just gonna say to the board, I just added a meeting for next Wednesday, short meeting in anticipation of hopefully finalizing our MOA with the police union. We couldn't, uh, finalize it for tonight, couldn't get all the players we need in place. So if we could just meet quickly and hopefully that's the only topic and we won't be also talking about the override from the day before. So next week, next Wednesday, just short, okay?
Sounds good. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Tenio, aye.
Marali, aye.
Real aye. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.